My name is Joe McGivern. I am opening the meeting as the senior, not oldest, member of the Holyoke City Council. Because our president is not with us at the moment. Councilor McGee, President McGee plans to join us by Zoom very shortly. If he was on Zoom, he could just ask one of us to run the meeting because when you're on Zoom, I think everybody understands hybrid doesn't work when you're trying to chair a meeting. So Todd has asked me to chair it, but because he's not here.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Councilor McGivern to serve as Chair.
A second now.
From the members of the City Council, all those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Can I say no?
No, no you can't.
Yes, but you'll still lose.
Welcome, everybody, to a very special meeting, not unprecedented, but certainly one that we take very seriously. It's a joint meeting of the Holyoke City Council with the Holyoke Public School Committee itself. A joint vote will take place this night after we do some introductions of our candidates to fill the vacant position for the Ward Three School Committee position itself. Just a little bit of background, we've done this, many of us, over the years. Joint meeting and it's a ballot, once we come to the time to vote for the position, for the person that we wish to fill that vacancy, it's a ballot vote. Our Assistant City Clerk is with us this evening. She will call each elected official's name. At that time, you will state the name of the candidate you wish to take that position. Because there are, the mayor is a part of the school committee, although he's, I think he's joining us shortly, and even though we may have other members not here, it's a simple majority of the combined total membership of each body, which is 23. Thirteen city councilors and ten, counting the mayor, school committee people. That is 12 votes. So the first person to get 12 votes tonight will be the next candidate to be, to sit on, to finish the term of the Ward Three School Committee position itself. Is there any questions or discussion on that? If not, it's been suggested to me by the Chair, Mildred says Vice Chair, but I say Chair of the School Committee because the mayors are just there for good reasons, but you know, the real Chair, we know who the real Chair is. We talked about this and what we thought was we give each candidate, you know, four or five minutes at the microphone to introduce themselves. Some of us, some have submitted resumes, some have not. There are candidates that are here tonight that are going to ask to be considered, that are not part of the resume or introduction into the Human Resources Department. We can, as elected officials, vote for anyone we wish. So I suggest we hear to anyone who wishes to be a candidate. Councilor Bartley.
Well, Mr. President, just a point of order. I thought you might have the clerk call the roll. I thought we might do the pledge.
We're gonna do that. And you're absolutely right, and I'm a little rusty up here, so my apologies.
No, just a gentle reminder.
Procedures, I think we're all on the same page. You okay? All right. Then we're gonna have the clerk call the roll. We are hybrid, so I think we've been taught recently that we were doing some things wrong, that all of our votes, there's only gonna be one this evening after this, all our votes are by roll call. And of course, roll call is by roll call. Clerk, call the roll.
Anderson Burgos.
Here.
Bartley.
Here.
Governor.
Here.
Jordan.
Here.
Maldonado Vales.
Here.
McGee.
McGivern.
Here.
Murphy Rombaletti.
Here.
Puelo.
Ivy Rivera.
Jay Rivera.
Here.
Tomlin.
Here.
Bacon.
Here.
Brunel.
Here.
Collamore.
Here.
LaFay.
Present.
Feliciano Sims.
Here.
Romero.
Here.
Tensley Williams.
Present.
Willoughby.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
I meet the quorum for the joint body, but also for both bodies individually. Would everyone please rise for a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. God bless America. City of Holyoke.
And the City Council.
So if there's no questions, no discussion, I think we should go to the, to our candidates. We welcome everybody. We got an open seat, which I think might be better if you want to come in, sit down and do your speak, your talk. Four to five minutes, some questions, the answers, but it's not, not an interview process. It's just kind of, if there's a question, elected official, I'm sure questions will be asked, but we'd like to do is to hear from each of you. And thank you for those who have submitted in advance resumes and cover letters and so forth. You also can choose, if you wish, there's a mic right at the rail. If you rather prefer standing, you can also use the mic. We, and Councilor Bartley, you forgot to remind me, we are being recorded tonight. We are live on the access channel. We are Zoom. Zoom is being recorded and we are being streamed. And that should always be announced before every meeting, so thank you. And the order was given to me, it's not on the agenda, but Yadalet Rivera Colon, would you be here? When you sit down, if you see a green light, the mic is on. If not, just hit the button and the mic will come on.
Sounds good. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Hello, everyone. My name is Dr. Yadalet Rivera Colon, and I say that not to be pretentious or to say that my word has more value, but because there's not many people with my background who get to be doctors. And to me, it's really important to have representation, especially for our children, because they cannot be what they cannot see. When I saw the opportunity to serve in the school committee, especially to the world that I live in, I realized that it was an opportunity, and it's an opportunity to continue to serve our youth. I get to have many privileges as being a citizen of Holyoke. I am a homeowner. I have a little kid who will soon be part of the Holyoke Public Schools, and I get to serve my community. I didn't want to look to live anywhere else. I was born and raised in Puerto Rico, and I, when I went to get my PhD in molecular and cellular biology at UMass, I got to do community service in Holyoke. I didn't know anything about Holyoke at the time, and I felt welcomed, but I also learned that a lot of the kids that I met at the different schools and even their parents, that was the first time they ever met a Puerto Rican scientist, a Latina, who had a doctorate. And to me, that was really important. And once I, I ended up having a job in Philadelphia at University of Pennsylvania, but I knew that I wanted to come back, because I knew that I could make a difference, I knew that I could help. And once I got the opportunity, I came back and I moved right into Holyoke, because if you want to help a community, if you want to serve a community, you have to be part of the community. So that's what I did, and since then, I've been serving in every possible way. So I'm an Assistant Professor of Biology at Bay Path University, and I do everything I can to get as many people there so that they can get experiences there. I also serve as the President of the Board for Girls Inc. of the Valley, which is here in Holyoke, and I have had the opportunity to do many things that way, to inspire girls to be strong, smart, and bold. I get to serve in the Board of Mass Hire Holyoke, because I believe that education is key, but what the way that people can support themselves is by having a job that allows them to have a living wage. I also get to serve as the Latino Scholarship Fund co-president, because the only way that students get to go to college is if they have the funds to do so. And that's one of the ways that I can contribute in order to make sure that that happens. So when I had the opportunity to be here to serve, to have the opportunity to really advocate for our students, I took the chance right away, especially because it is important that they have somebody who represents them and somebody who can speak for them. I get to be in the schools, I teach school specials whenever I can at different schools here in Holyoke, and I get to hear from them that they don't think that people are gonna invest money on them. When we see the renderings of what the middle schools could look like, I, my heart broke when two students were looking at it and they said, "That would never be for us. They would never do that for us here in Holyoke, absolutely not." And that breaks my heart, because we are a community that we do care about our youth. The problem is that the systems don't always allow us to care for them in the way that we wish we could. And any opportunity that I can to be an advocate, to be able to work on their behalf, I take it. So that's why I'm here today, and I'm hoping that I have what it takes to be able to continue to advocate for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. To the Vice Chair of the School Committee, Mildred.
I want to thank you for being here this evening, for taking the time to come and apply for, apply, and really the word apply doesn't really sound right, right? I do have a question, I am gonna ask everybody the same question, to be fair. So talk about your understanding of the role of the school committee in receivership or not in receivership. And then can you tell us what commitment you believe you would have to make to professional learning and training, along with the other school committee members, to best, to be best prepared to lead the district out of receivership?
So receivership is almost like the R-word. And it is really sad and shameful that when, once a district gets in receivership, it's really hard to get out of receivership. And I, I think that one big part of that is having a plan, and we need to really have people, elected officials, who serve, who are gonna advocate to the state, to be able to really get us out of receivership, so that we can have basically our local control back, so that we can make the decisions for our schools and be able to serve our children in the best way possible. And it's really a matter of, in terms of the things that I would need in terms of development, I think that basically any opportunity to learn is important, anything that I can learn in order to serve better. I think that I'm a lifelong learner, and whatever is needed for whatever situation we are faced, I am committed to learning and getting all the tools and things of the trade that I would definitely need. I am a fast learner, and I'm a researcher by trade, so definitely whatever we need, I'm gonna learn everything about it, and I'm gonna know the whole history and everything else. Just whatever we would need in order to move forward and continue serving our youth.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Doctor, again, we thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our second candidate will be Cynthia Rivera. Cynthia Rivera?
She won't be making it. Her daughter's running 105 fever. She did reach out to me.
Thank you, Councilor Rivera. Next candidate is Lawrence Jackson. Larry, did you want to stand, or are you better off standing?
Standing.
Thank you.
Hello. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Lawrence Jackson. I was born here in the city sixty-some-odd years ago. I became interested in being on the board due to my whole life coming up. I've worked with children, I've helped children, I worked with my mother, God bless her soul, she rests in peace. She ran the South City of Holyoke Tutorial Center, which she had college students come in and work with the, the Black and the Hispanic down in South Holyoke, helping them get better in life coming up. She worked with the parents to help them, you know, get jobs and so forth. After that, I did go in the service for a little while. When I came home from the service, I went into doing construction for a year, then I became a firefighter, which I stayed there, I retired there after thirty-five years. In the time on the fire department, I did coach baseball, football, basketball. I am interested in the city itself in general. I have lived in Ward Three for seventeen years. I'm here to help, you know, I, what else can I say? That I was on the union board with the fire department, I was Vice President of the Fireman's Aid. When I retired from there, I did start the Christmas lighting parade here in the city, which is the fire trucks or different trucks that come and, you know, do a Christmas lighting for the kids and all, so. When I seen this, you know, I said, "Well, I would love to be here," because I love children, you know, and I love helping them.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
You're welcome.
Hang on one sec, please. We do have, I know we have at least one question from our Chair, Mildred LaFay of the School Committee.
As I said, I'm gonna ask everybody the same question. I know it is nerve-wracking to be up there, but again, I truly applaud each one of you that have come here to have the opportunity to be serving as the, as the Ward Three representative of the school committee. So the question again will be, talk about your understanding of the role of the school committee in receivership versus not in receivership? And can you tell us what commitment you believe you would have to make to professional learning and training, along with the other school committee members, to be best prepared to lead the district out of receivership?
Well, you know, the best that I would be able to put that is, everyone that's been here before me, I'm gonna look up to them, yeah, I'm gonna follow in their steps. This is something new to me, so, you know, I'm gonna help and do the best that I can. You know, I don't know, I'll be honest with everyone, I don't know what I'm doing. I know what I'm getting into, and I'm willing to do it and listen to the ones above me.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
Thank you. If you could, Larry, Councilor Tomlin.
Yeah, thank you. I wish I had asked this question earlier, and I'll ask her too, Dr. Rivera. Larry, there's about a year and a four months left in this position. Would you plan on running for this position in November of 2023?
Yes, I am. If I do get in, yes, I would.
Okay. Dr. Colau Rivera, would you also consider running for this position in 2023? Thank you.
For everybody on Zoom, the doctor said yes. Next candidate in the chambers is Hannah Kennedy.
Hi, I'm Hannah Kennedy. I have been a resident of Holyoke for just over ten years now. I have two children in the Holyoke Public Schools, sorry. Both of my children attend Metcalf Elementary, and I will soon have a third there as well, so. I'm passionate about education. I myself have several advanced degrees. I think that the students of Holyoke deserve to have the absolute best education that they can. I have been involved at the school since we started. My son started in the half-day pre-K there, and we absolutely adore Metcalf. I've been a member of the PTA there for several years. I was a treasurer there. Prior to the shutdown of COVID, I actually started a Lego Robotics Club for the students there. I believe that STEM is very important, and, you know, I hope to be able to integrate more of that into the schools. I've also been a soccer coach here in Holyoke a couple of previous years, and, you know, I'm passionate about education. I, I want, you know, my children and all the children in Holyoke to have the absolute best experience that they possibly can. I myself came from a very low-income area. I'm from Florida originally, I came up to this area for college and have stayed. And the experiences that we can give the students in school really is going to help shape the opportunities that they have as they go forward. And I think that that is important, to maximize that experience for them, both, you know, curriculum, extracurricular, really being able to provide as much as we can for the students here in Holyoke, and I would love to help be a part of that.
Thank you, Hannah. To our Chair, Mildred LaFay.
I know, everybody looks at me right after that. They're like...
No, you announced it, so we appreciate that.
Okay. Welcome, Hannah, and again, thank you for being here this evening. Talk about your understanding of the role of the school committee in receivership and versus not in receivership, and can you also tell us about what commitment you believe you would have to make to professional learning and training, along with the other school committee members, to be best prepared to lead the district out of receivership?
I will be quite honest, I don't know how different it would be under receivership and out of receivership. My understanding is that the school committee has less authority under receivership, but I'm not 100% certain, because that's not something that I've really studied. As far as, you know, commitment to, to learning and education within the school committee, I'm 100% committed to, to education. I'm passionate about education, I'm a lifelong learner. I am in a career where I am constantly required by my licensure to continue, taking continuing education classes, and I, I adore the opportunity to learn new things and bring it to what I do every day. So the idea that there would be that opportunity to help learn with all the other school committee members, to be able to better what we're doing here in Holyoke, is very exciting. Thank you.
I believe, Councilor Tomlin.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Hannah, for stepping up and volunteering to get a position that's very demanding in our community and very important position. And I know it's not easy for anybody's back there, applying and sitting there and getting a little bit of, few questions. I was in that same position about twenty years ago, when I was looking to get appointed to the City Council, and I know it's not an easy position to be in, but thank you so much for stepping up. As I asked the other persons inquiring about this position, would you be willing to run for this position in 2023?
I would, yes.
Thank you.
Any further discussion or questions? School committee person Collamore, I almost, I can't say promotion, that would really get me in trouble. Almost brought you over, Ronnie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hannah, what degree do you have in, that you've come here from Florida to get?
I did my undergraduate degree at Smith College. I received my business degree at University of Massachusetts at the Eisenberg School of Business. I have a master's degree from there, and then I also got an advanced degree from Elms College in healthcare leadership.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hannah, thank you very much. The four candidates that we've just called, including Cynthia Rivera, who unfortunately cannot be with us this evening, each filed a cover letter and some other stuff, resumes, indicating that each of these individuals live in Ward Three, and as we heard tonight, most of them, you know, gave us an idea of how long they've lived in Ward Three. That's important to note, because we're gonna invite anyone else who is interested in applying to be a candidate, to look for the position, to come forward. We're gonna ask you to state your full name, your address, you have to live in Ward Three for us to vote on you this evening. There's no way around that. It's an elected position, there's no, you can move into Ward Three, you have to live there at the moment. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to come forward and express an interest?
Hello. It's a pleasure to see, you know, so many nice faces, faces I recognize, oh, faces I recognize from my time on the school committee. My name is Faisal Zebdani Jr. I was a student rep for three years, and I enjoyed it. And I'm glad to see that so many faces are still on the committee from when I served. You know, Mr. Collamore's been here a long time, and many of you friendly faces are still here, so it's very welcoming to see.
Faisal, could we have your address too, please?
Oh, so my address is 16 Carlton Street. I haven't lived in the ward as long as some, you know, people here, but I am living in Ward Three, and I would definitely look forward to serving in this seat. I got involved very young with, you know, politics and whatnot, being in school. I was class president, and I was always looking for ways to make things better. I don't have any, you know, bachelor's degrees or master's degrees or doctorates, but, you know, I do know that if I was chosen, I would come here and learn from the rest of the committee and see what we could do to make Holyoke a better place for not only our students, but parents, staff members. And, you know, we had a really great family holding down the Ward Three seat for many years. Dennis Burks and Becky Burks have done a great job, and we need a good person in that seat. And it's just amazing how, you know, when people are pulling papers, there's no, you know, there's very little candidates, but it's interesting to see tonight that there's so many candidates for the seat. So that's, I didn't expect that. But I work as a PCA, and, which is a personal care aide, so I have clients who I take care of, bring to appointments, give medications, you know, basic stuff like that. I also do self-employed work, like Uber, Lyft, Instacart, just to keep myself busy. And I also was a student at Holyoke High School, E&amp;Y, Metcalf, and, you know, seeing some of the school committee members who were the student rep, it made me want to run for school committee. And I, you know, pulled papers and I got certified. I pulled papers three times, I got certified twice, and unfortunately, I wasn't elected. But, you know, many of you who are here have also pulled papers and got certified and didn't make it the first time or the second time, but tried and tried again. So if I was given the opportunity, I would definitely be grateful. Back when I was on the committee, I believe they met biweekly, so now there's monthly meetings, so there's not much for us to do, but if it makes sense, I hope that we can make it so that there's more work for us to do, which would be getting out of receivership.
And I think that leads right into the Chair LaFay's question.
Yeah. Okay. So thank you again, Faisal, for coming here, and yes, I saw you when you were younger, and on the school committee as a student rep. Talk about your understanding of the role of the school committee in receivership versus not in receivership, and can you tell us what commitment you believe you would have to make to professional learning and training, along with the other school committee members, to be best prepared to lead the district out of receivership?
So, um, I mean, like I said, before receivership, we were able to do much more. I mean, I was a student member, and I couldn't vote, and I wasn't allowed an executive session, but I was still very involved. I gave my report biweekly, I would show up in the summer, and, you know, I, I still had a good idea of what was going on, and I was involved, but I just couldn't vote, you know? So, um, to get us out of receivership, it would be a lot of work, working with, you know, parents, maybe even getting some students involved, working with the state, but it's less, it seems like there's less things for the school committee to do right. But it's less, it seems like there's less things for the school committee to do right now, but we need to get out, out of receivership so that we can have a say in what's going on in our schools. And a way to do that would be maybe working with the principals and, you know, each school, making sure that, you know, they're were, they're speaking to teachers to keep kids on track, making sure that they're passing their tests, MCAS, whatever, whatever requirements that the state has for us to get out of receivership. I mean, I don't know if there's just a set thing like, oh, okay, next week Wednesday, you guys can be out of receivership. So, um, you know, it's been about seven years now, I think. And originally back then, I believe the Commissioner of Education said, oh, it'll be three years, four-year turnaround plan and whatever. So obviously that wasn't the case, but, you know, there's a lot of work ahead of us. And, um, to answer Mr. Tomlin's question, I remember Mr. Tomlin, because he always delivers, so. Even when I was very young, he was our mail carrier for a little while, at least what I can remember. And, you know, he always delivered. But, um, to answer his question, I would run for the, um, seat. And, you know, I would go about door knocking, get signatures, and do my best to make sure that students' voices are heard. And being, you know, a recent student in the school, as I feel like I would have a good understanding. Even though the schools have changed so much since I've been gone, it's unbelievable. But, you know, with the restructuring of the high schools and whatnot, that was like almost unheard of. I would never imagine that to happen. But, you know, long-term, I hope we can get the two new middle schools and get out of receivership, improve third grade reading levels, all reading levels, and, you know, try to be one of the best cities in the state.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Faisal.
Thank you.
Counselor Tomlin, you got an answer for your question?
As he's all said, I answered that, and I remember you running before, and I think you might have run a couple of times anyways for, it was Award Four School Committee, possibly? Yeah, thanks for showing an interest in, in serving again.
And I thank all of you for the work that you do every day. And, you know, even working through COVID, it wasn't easy, but, you know, you guys were able to get it done. And hopefully we can all work together, even if I don't get the seat, somebody else gets the seat, you know. We can all work together. And our main goal is to get out of receivership. It might not be today, it might not be tomorrow, but hopefully soon.
Thank you.
Faisal, thank you very much. Well done.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to come forward as a candidate? If not, is there anyone on Zoom that is here to be a candidate or just here to listen in? We're checking the, uh, the poller. Okay, we have no raised hands on Zoom.
Motion goes first ballot?
Second.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to go to the first ballot. On that, we will have our, our Assistant City Clerk call the ballot. Again, she will state the name of each elected official. At that point, the elected official states the name of who they wish to be the next Ward Three School Committee person. With that in mind, I, I'm just going to ask Irma to, uh, to start in one second. I want to make a quick editorial comment. It's not going to influence on how I vote this evening, but with the acceptance of Faisal saying something about staff, I didn't hear one thing about teachers. And I think this school committee has always been dedicated and understands the importance of, if you don't take care of the teachers, you can't be taking care of the children, because they are the front line. And I, I just, I don't mean that as more than constructive criticism about what we're doing here. And, and when we get out of receivership, you know, we're going to have a lot of ground to make up because we've lost a lot of good teachers over the last several years, and some for the wrong reasons. Sorry, Counselor, I guess I'm taking a little bit of editorial comment here and a little bit of advantage of the podium.
No problem.
If we're ready, there's no questions, the motion on the floor has been passed. The clerk will call the first ballot. When your name's called, state your candidate.
Anderson Burgos.
Yadilet Rivera Cologne.
Bartley.
Larry Jackson.
Givner.
Yadilet Rivera Cologne.
Jordaine.
Larry Jackson.
Maldonado Velas.
Yadilet.
McGee. McGivern.
Lawrence Jackson.
Murphy Rumbaletti.
Jadalet Rivera Cologne.
Ivy Vero.
Yadalet Rivera Cologne.
Jay Vero.
Yadilet Rivera Cologne.
Tomlin.
Hannah Kennedy.
Bacon.
Mr. Larry Jackson.
Brunel.
Uh, I'm going to go with Dr. Rivera Cologne.
Colomar.
Kennedy.
LaFabe.
Hannah Kennedy.
Feliciano Sims.
Hannah Kennedy.
Romero.
Dr. Rivera Cologne.
Tensley Williams. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Okay, thank you. Wallahan.
Mr. Jackson.
Wilson.
Uh, Dr. Rivera Cologne.
Nine Rivera Cologne. Six Jackson. Four Kennedy.
Make a motion to go to the second ballot.
Second.
Clerk has told us in the first ballot Rivera Cologne nine, Lawrence Jackson six, Hannah Kennedy four. Motion made in second to go to the second ballot, is there any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Clerk will call the roll.
Anderson Burgos.
Dr. Rivera Cologne.
Bartley.
Larry Jackson.
Givner.
Dr. Rivera Cologne.
Jordaine.
Larry Jackson.
Maldonado Velas.
Yadilet Rivera Cologne.
McGivern.
Lawrence Jackson.
Murphy Rumbaletti.
Jadalet Rivera Cologne.
Ivy Vero.
Dr. Rivera Cologne.
Jay Vero.
Dr. Rivera Cologne.
Tomlin.
Hannah Kennedy.
Bacon.
Larry Jackson.
Brunel.
Dr. Rivera Cologne.
Colomar.
Kennedy.
LaFabe.
Hannah Kennedy.
Feliciano Sims.
I'm Hannah Kennedy.
Romero.
Dr. Rivera Cologne.
Tensley Williams.
Larry Jackson.
Wallahan.
Dr. Rivera Cologne.
Wilson.
Dr. Rivera Cologne.
Ten Rivera Cologne. Five Jackson. Four Kennedy.
The clerk has announced, uh, ten for Dr. Rivera Cologne, five for Lawrence Jackson, and four for Hannah Kennedy. Failed to reach the twelve.
Motion to go to the third ballot?
Second.
Motion made in second to go to the third ballot. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? The clerk will call the roll.
Anderson Burgos.
Dr. Rivera Cologne.
Bartley.
Larry Jackson.
Givner.
Dr. Rivera Cologne.
Jordaine.
Larry Jackson.
Maldonado Velas.
Dr. Rivera Cologne.
McGivern.
Lawrence Jackson.
Murphy Rumbaletti.
Dr. Rivera Cologne.
Ivy Vero.
Dr. Rivera Cologne.
Jay Vero.
Dr. Rivera Cologne.
Tomlin.
Hannah Kennedy.
Bacon.
Mr. Larry Jackson.
Brunel.
Dr. Rivera Cologne.
Colomar. LaFabe.
Hannah Kennedy.
Feliciano Sims.
Dr. Rivera Cologne.
Romero.
Dr. Rivera Cologne.
Tensley Williams.
Larry Jackson.
Wallahan.
Rivera Cologne.
Wilson.
Dr. Rivera Cologne.
Eleven Rivera Cologne. Five Jackson. Three Kennedy.
On that ballot, eleven, Dr. Rivera Cologne, five, Lawrence Jackson, three for Hannah Kennedy. Failed to meet the twelve.
Motion to take up the fourth ballot.
Fourth ballot.
Motion made in second to go to the fourth ballot, is there any discussion? We did have a little discussion prior to the ballot process that the record in Holyoke is 34, 34 ballots. The record in Chicopee is 108 ballots. This is not a record-setting night. Clerk will call the roll.
Anderson Burgos.
Dr. Rivera Cologne.
Bartley.
Larry Jackson.
Givner.
Dr. Rivera Cologne.
Jordaine.
Larry Jackson.
Maldonado Velas.
Dr. Rivera Cologne.
McGivern.
Lawrence Jackson.
Murphy Rumbaletti.
Rivera Cologne.
Ivy Vero.
Dr. Rivera Cologne.
Jay Vero.
Dr. Rivera Cologne.
Tomlin.
Hannah Kennedy.
Bacon.
Lawrence Jackson.
Brunel.
Dr. Rivera Cologne.
Colomar. LaFabe.
Boy. This is a tough one. Dr. Rivera Cologne.
Feliciano Sims.
Dr. Rivera Cologne.
Romero.
Dr. Rivera Cologne.
Tensley Williams.
Larry Jackson.
Wallahan.
Dr. Rivera Cologne.
Wilson.
Dr. Rivera Cologne.
Twelve Rivera Cologne. Five Jackson. Two Kennedy.
By your ballot, Hannah Kennedy, two votes, Lawrence Jackson, five votes, Dr. Rivera Cologne, and our next Ward Three School Committee person, 12 votes. Motion to adjourn? Motion made in second to adjourn. Doctor, could you call the city clerk's office tomorrow? And they'll set up how you have to sign in, get sworn in, and everything that goes with it. Congratulations, congratulations to everybody. I think this is a very difficult ballot, all well done, all well said. And a motion to adjourn, does anybody want to debate that?
I wanted to debate just one second, I wanted to state something for the record.
Counselor Anderson Burgos.
Thank you for allowing me. So first of all, um, the people that came here tonight, um, showing their interest, thank you so much for showing your interest, because that means that Holyoke's on the right path, first, first and foremost. Secondly, I knew or know, um, several of the people who applied and friendships are very important to me. But where the direction that the city needs to, uh, head in is even more important. So to know Dr. Rivera Cologne, when I met her in 2018, I wasn't aware that I was in front of greatness. And I don't say that because I'm, I'm, I'm so happy that we chose her. But I mean, I'm saying that because she's so humble. She never once ever told me all of these, all of this, not once. Wasn't until she, she decided to throw her name in the, in the ring that I found this out. And then to listen to this woman say this in front of me, I, I almost got teary-eyed. So thank you, everyone who showed up today. I, I, I'm honored to know every single one of you, and thank you all for being here tonight. So now I'll make that motion to adjourn.
It's been made in second. All those in favor? Any opposed? We now stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody.